Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Planning Commission. The regular meeting for the Planning Commission is called to order. We're going to have a moment of prayers and followed by the pledge allegiance. So, please join me.
Please face the flag and cover your hearts. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Joanne, roll call, please.
Did we miss the moment of silent prayer and meditation?
She said it, but you jumped right into it.
Oh, okay. I apologize.
Okay. We'll take a moment to sign up for you. That's okay.
I'll go ahead and call roll. For the record, Commissioner Castellanos is absent today. He has an excuse absent. He is currently not feeling well. I'll go ahead and start the roll call. Commissioner Reyes?
Present.
Commissioner Becerra?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Chair Heng?
Here.
Approval of minutes. Tonight, we have the minutes from the regular meeting of Planning Commission's February 11th and March 11th. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes? If there's none, the minutes are adopted as present. Before we start oral communication, I'd like to welcome our new commissioners. Jose Reyes?
Reyes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Pleasure.
We have oral communication. Would anyone like to speak on any item that is not on agenda? I don't have any cards. So, we have one public hearing. It's going to be the AKC Permit, Inc. Joanne, who will be doing the report?
Planning Associate Miriam Machado will be presenting the staff report. And the item is for variance number 2403 at 3120 East Garvey Avenue South.
Good evening, Commissioners. The item before you, as Joanne just mentioned, is variance number 2403 for the property located at 3120 East Garvey Avenue South. The variance being requested is to allow for two oversized electronic reader board signs. The property is zone neighborhood commercial mixed use and is located along East Garvey Avenue South. The property is .85 acres and has a 10,170 square foot building. The property is surrounded by both commercial and residential uses. Here is a photo of the existing site. The existing site is currently an office building occupied by Allied Restoration. Prior to this, it was used as a retail building. Here, we have the site plan where it shows the location of the two proposed reader board signs, shown as a 1 and a 2 on the site plan. The property received approval in 2008 for variance number 08-09 to allow two reader board signs. At the time, the use of the building was retail occupied by wind supply. The two reader boards are shown in the pictures here on the screen. The two signs that were installed became non-operational and were removed. This is the northeast elevation showing the proposed reader board sign location. And this is the northwest elevation. The development standards allow for 154 square foot wall sign. Of the 54 square feet, 40.5 square feet may be used or occupied as a reader board. The proposal would deviate from these standards as they are requesting two 78.16 reader board signs exceeding the maximum number and size. In order to approve a variance, the listed findings must be made. Staff is not able to support findings A, C, or F. As such, staff would recommend that one reader board be approved along with one wall sign in place of the two reader boards. The Planning Commission may either adopt resolution number 25-6167 approving the variance with staff's recommendation of one reader board sign and one wall sign, or adopt resolution number 25-6167 approving the variance with added or revised conditions, or alternatively may deny the variance. Staff is available for any questions, and we also have a representative for the project here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to have open public hearings. We're going to be hearing testimony from the applicant, those in favor than those opposed.
Madam Chair, if possible, I have a quick question for staff.
Okay.
Miriam, with regard to the two signs that were previously there, how much bigger or is it the same size sign as was there in 2019?
The signs that were approved in 2008 were smaller. At that time, they were proposed at 66.38 square feet.
Okay. So, what's the net increase in size that's being requested tonight?
Chair, if I may. The previously approved sign for the former variance, the total sign area was 66.38 square feet. However, 53.75 square feet was for the reader board component. So, and the difference is 24.41 square feet for the reader board itself. So, the proposed sign is 24.41 square feet larger than the reader board for the previously approved variance.
Okay. So, I guess the sort of follow-up question is, with regard to the component portion, what are you saying with regard to where it says like wind supply up there? Is that what you're talking about when you say component?
The reader board itself, the digital reader board itself. So, below the wind, where it says wind, below where it says wind supply, that component is 53.75 square feet. But the whole sign area, including the wind supply, is 66.38 square feet.
Okay. So, is it the same footprint effectively?
It's, the proposed is larger.
Okay.
The proposed footprint is 78.16. So, it's larger than...
So, just for clarification, so the sign on the left, which is, I think, the front door entrance, right? That doesn't look like it could get much bigger than what it currently is, right? Or than it was at that point in time, right? Is that one going to be significantly larger?
I think this one, this is the old one.
That's the old one.
Right, right. So, what I'm asking is for that, for the proposed new signage, is that one, is the footprint for that one increasing?
What they received approval for and what was issued a building permit at the time was for a 66.38 square foot sign total with a 53.75 square foot reader board component. As far as the size that was actually installed, I don't know. I wasn't the one...
Right. No, no, no. I understand. I'm just trying to figure out, like, is that, is the footprint for the proposed new signage larger than what is, what was up there at the time?
The, based on what was approved, the proposed is larger, yes. And based on the, what it looks like on the plans and just comparing what they're showing on the elevations, it appears so.
I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong in terms of my perception of it, but it looks almost identical in terms of the footprint on the building. So, I'm just trying to figure out, is the additional square footage on the other one or is it part of the overall aggregate?
You can hear from the applicants and then come back.
Well, as far as their, okay. So, what they're proposing is larger than what was previously up there. It appears that way slightly by... About 11.78 square feet.
Okay. And then with regard to, so obviously, we're living in a different time than when it was approved back in 2008 under that variance. So, what was the state of our ordinance with regard to this type of signage back then? Was this, so obviously, there was a variance that was granted, but what was the overall limitation on the size of signage at that point in time?
So, the limitation of the size of signage at that time when it was approved, it was, this portion of the sign code has not changed. However, in the sign code, there are different categories. One of the two categories, well, two of the categories happens to be commercial, non-office, and commercial office. Wind supply was retail and allied restoration is office. So, that was the main difference. So, in the previous, I guess, in the previous variance application or variance approval, one of the justifications is that a commercial, a commercial retail is allowed a pylon sign with a digital reader board. That's allowed in a commercial non-office. In a commercial office, you can have, you can have detached sign that is basically a monument sign.
Got it. And so, just so we're clear, is there any delineation? Obviously, this property has unique frontage in the sense that it is along the freeway corridor. Do we have, do we have any, do we have any specific requirements pertaining to the freeway corridor that are different than other portions of the city?
There is. You are allowed to have, in terms of digital reader board signs, you're allowed to have one digital reader board sign. And the size of that digital reader board sign is, for the reader board's portion, is 70, I believe it's 75% of the allowed signage for a normally, for what's normally allowed.
Okay. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. We're going to have the applicants coming up. That would be Chris Kelly.
I'm Chris Kelly with AKC Permit, and I'm representing Allied today. Hope you can hear me. Yep, there we go. Yeah. So, again, thank you for hearing us this evening. As you can see in discussions, we've been going back and forth about the size. So, we're talking just shy of 12 square feet. That's happening because of the difference of the change in technology now. So, it would be a little bit smaller or the size you see. We just felt that that fits comfortably on the wall and more emulates what was up there previously. And as was brought up before about having the previous owner of the buildings signage up there, they had a stagnant portion, and that's something that we certainly would like to do with this as well, is just keep a part that says Allied Restoration up there that does not change copy. So, we can either do that digitally or we can do it static. Static was what the other word was, where it just never changed. But the idea is to never change that one portion, and we can go either direction on that. The reason being is that there is no other signage on the building. So, this is to serve as their main source of identification. There is no pylon sign out there. If there were a pylon sign, it would be allowed a double-sided message center, in essence, so it could be seen on both sides of the I-10. And that's what this accomplishes here, one over the door and then one around the other bump out, so that it's visible to sort of emulate the pylon sign without creating the visual clutter and all that good stuff that comes with the pylon sign. This panel system that's going up there, of course, is all, everything's brand new on it. It fully complies with current Title 24 requirements for energy usage in the state of California. It auto dims. It has the on-off features that you would find in those panels that are required by Title 24. Another benefit that it has is for community services. So, this, the owner of the building who's here tonight as well, they're also the tenants, they host different community events there throughout the month to host those. So, those would be things that would be advertised on the board, the boards. The boards also link into the Caltrans, Department of Transportation, State Transportation System. So, if there's ever an Amber Alert, Silver Alert, anything along those lines, the recent fires in Palisades, Pasadena, and all that, they would have, they would have access to override anything that's on the board to start notifying the public. So, part of the reason we're doing this is for the community benefit as well. So, it's not strictly a self-serving feature having this or making this request. It's imperative that we have the visibility up and down the freeway, both directions. You know, of course, we can settle for one if that's where the board leans, but we would really prefer to have the two because the panel on the left over the front door, it faces towards the east. So, you're only going to see that coming in on the 10 from east going to west, whereas the other one off to the right would serve the traffic coming from west to east. So, part of the reason why, I believe the original was proposed, but certainly one of the big reasons why we're proposing the dual panels tonight. So, again, it has slightly increased, but that's just because of the way the technology's made up. It would actually go smaller, quite a bit smaller, or at this size, we're sort of limited. If you can see, well, I can't really see it up there, but on your plans, you'll see these little boxes on the elevation drawings there. Those little boxes are all little square cubes, or might be rectangular in this case, but anyway. So, the size of the sign is coming from adding one column on the left as well as one either on top or bottom. That's where the extra size is coming in. But it does fit on the wall comfortably. It doesn't overhang. It doesn't overlap in any way, and it doesn't interfere with any architectural features on the building. So, happy to answer any questions you may have.
That's what I was going to ask, if it was going to overhang. So, answered my question.
Yeah, no. Yeah, that would, that wouldn't be good.
So, each of these signs will be increased by 12 square foot or both of them?
Each at almost 11, I mean, almost 12 square feet, yes. Correct, yeah. And they're both, they're both identical size.
Oh, good.
So, that's part of it. You really can't, unless you're at the mall across the freeway, you really can't see both at the same time. You might catch a little glimpse or a little angle of them, but the idea is that in the case that you can, they should always be the same, just for continuity's sake.
Does anyone have any commission questions for applicant?
I have none right now.
If none, I have Brad Manozas.
Brad, can I ask?
Yes. Is that, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Madam Chairman. Commissioners, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I've been called a lot of things, and it's called get out of here. Are we ready? The last gentleman that just spoke, spoke to where my heart is, and that is the community. I've been associated with Allied now for two or three years since they very first came here. As a matter of fact, I met them at the state of the city up at Big League Dreams like three years ago. I think, as a matter of fact, I think it was Dario Castellanos that introduced Jackie to me. She was asking, how can she get involved in the city? And he referred her to me. I work with the Kiwanis, and we put on a lot of number events for the community, the Christmas parade, Easter egg hunts, things like that. And we just finished our big golf tournament, which raises money to put those things on. In the meantime, she introduced herself because she wanted to be giving away turkey dinners for Thanksgiving. And she didn't know how to do that. She didn't who had a contact. She didn't know who needed the dinners, but that's their passion, and that's their one service project for the Allied Restoration. And so, we brainstormed a little bit. We came up with some churches. We came up with ourselves, school districts, et cetera, the people that needed, the foster, the homeless, et cetera, that needed those dinners. And I think they gave out, I'm going to guess around 800 to 1,000 that first year, which is good. And that's gone up in recent years, the last couple of years. Because she is such a good partner, she also allowed a organization that I created with this part of the city called the Community Service Group, in which all of the service groups come together quarterly to meet at Allied Restoration. We used to meet here at City Hall. We've met at other places over the years, but the last two years, we've met at Allied Restoration, and she has hosted us on a quarterly basis, in which we all come together, we share our calendars, we see who needs what, who can help who, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And she does this out of the kindness of her heart. We don't pay anything for her. She usually has sandwiches, or pizza, or salads, or tamales that she makes. And it's really a very comfortable, very nice place to go and have a nice meeting. And they've got two nice meeting rooms. We have used both over the years. She's also been such a great community member that she's joined my Kiwanis club, so I'm indebted to her a little bit to that. So, she's been a very good partner. But I'd like to address those signs. They're great people, but do they need the signs? Yeah, they do. When I first started, I said, we're going to meet over at 30, what is it, 3,210 or something, East Valley South, East Garvey South, Garvey South. And I'm expecting to look for signs. There's no signs. There's not, you can't even see the addresses. So, I had to put up some makeshift signs just to let people know that the meeting was there until they got used to it. The signs would have been very helpful so they could find the place. The other thing is, you think about coming from the east to the west, and you're coming down off that hill, and you see we've got the Fourth of July fireworks going on. I've talked to Jackie. She's more agreeable to put up community events, just as the car dealerships do and the Plaza West Covina does. They're not just advertising their business, they're advertising the city. I don't know what you put on the other one going out of the city, maybe come back, whatever it is that they want to do. But I think these people are good people. This is positive for the city. Not to mention the fact that they have just spent the last five months buried in the Pacific Palisades trying to restore houses and families and things like that. And this is just one thing on their mind that really I don't think they need. The oversizeness on the, it's insignificant. Having them on both sides, I think, is necessary, just as the gentlemen say, you cannot see the one facing east if you're driving east, unless you want to look backwards, and I don't think we want anybody doing that. So, I would suggest that we try to agree to do this, and hopefully, you'll do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Shelby Williams?
Good evening, Chairwoman Heng and Planning Commissioners. I'm here to speak in favor of the variance request for Allied Restoration. I also wanted to make sure I understand, is staff recommending the first item, which talks about the one reader board, 78 square feet, and then the wall sign?
Chair, if I may?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, that is staff's recommendation.
Okay. Other than that, I have had the pleasure of the last several years going to that location to meet with an organization here in the city of West Covina. I would like to speak in favor of this application as a resident, as well as someone who has had the opportunity to go to that location on a regular basis for meetings, and it is a nice facility. Thank you.
I don't have any cards for opposing the project, so I'm going to close the public Okay, yeah, OP, if needed, called up. Come on up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time here tonight. My name is OP Amraz. I'm the owner and the founder of Allied Restoration. And I just want to share, you know, when we were looking around for a building, wind supply was up for sale, and I could not afford it. And so, I stopped looking at their building, and I kept looking for different areas. And so, at one point, they dropped the price by about a half a million dollars, and I still could not afford it. But I drove there, and I saw Mr., the owner, I don't know if his name is Mr. Win or not, but he said, "Son, you need to talk to my son, who's in the office." And his son took me around and said, "Hey, OP, yeah, I'd love to show you around." And I was very clear with him, and I said, "You know, you dropped the price, and I still can't afford it, but man, I would love to make an offer on this building. We've been looking around for months and months." And he took me to the reader signs, and he says, "OP, this is an employee that you never have to pay. You pay," like, this employee keeps talking and talking the whole time, day and night. And I thought, well, that's pretty attractive. And we don't do retail. We service when the homeowner has a flood or a fire in their home. Insurance companies give us a call, and we work on, with the insurance companies and with the homeowner to clean up the flood and get everything back to normal. So, I let him know, please don't be offended by the offer that I make you because I still can't afford your offer. And he was kind enough to reduce it enough where we could afford it. So, I felt very blessed to be able to get into this community, and our heart has always been to help other communities. My little brother, who was part of the founder, passed away two years into the business. Part of his heart was to feed the homeless, and so I thought we could carry on his legacy by starting the foundation. It's called the Passionate Life Foundation, and that's what was mentioned here earlier today. And we, every single year, try to figure out how many people we can bless with turkey dinners. And so, to date, we've fed over 10,000 families. We'd love to have the signs up there, and I'm open. It was spoken here earlier. We can reduce the signage, make it permanent, where it used to say wind supply. We could make a metal sign that says Allied Restoration, reducing the footprint of the reader board by six feet. I mean, whatever we can do, I mean, we're open to doing some of those things to really mimic what the sign used to look like. So, we just really call to you and see if you could please help us to keep those signs as they were before. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more cards? Or anyone who wanted to speak for or against the project? Any commissioners want to ask questions? The applicants?
Actually, I used Allied Restoration. I used to perform property management, maybe it was 10 years ago or so. And it was the same condo twice, bad architecture overlapping. One had a leak, went down to the very angry owners below, but your business, you guys did a wonderful job, really amazing, and the staff was professional. They'll price you, so you probably couldn't afford that building now, but it was great work.
Any commissioners have questions regarding the signage before I close the public hearing? I actually have questions for the applicant. If you... If you can, please come back up. Thank you. Now, the new reader board, basically right now, it doesn't have any of the office name on it, is that correct?
Correct.
So it's just a reader board that continuously change?
Yes, yes. But again, we're amenable to adding a panel, a static panel, that was similar to what was up there before, which OP indicated would reduce the footprint of the changeable message portion of the sign. So there is no signage on that building.
Okay.
That would be a nice concession to make, we think.
So if you were to add a signage for the name of this office, would that just take one of those black, block horizontally?
Most likely two.
Most likely two?
Two across the top.
Okay.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't increase. It wouldn't go over, it wouldn't go larger than what you see there. It would just be incorporated into what you see there.
That would remain there at all times if the name of the, and that applies to both signs?
Correct.
If this one gets changed, the other one gets changed exactly the same?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
It actually looks like it's built in just for that spot.
Yeah, it's, it's, when they designed, these have been designed over the years. I actually helped invent this technology, oh my gosh, white hair now, so, very long time ago. So when we were inventing this way back in the day, many decades ago, the technology has changed so much. It was, initially, it was more similar to this timer you have behind you on the wall, which is somewhat similar to what was up there before. What you see up here now, this, the newer technology, is, I won't say a TV, but it's very similar to what you'd see at Dodger Stadium, Anaheim Stadium, things like this, the boards that they would use. So it's capable of motion, but we do have limitations on the type of motion that we can use. It's not as advanced as those boards. But it's, you know, we certainly can add the static panel. And we would like to have the, certainly the changeable copy on two different signs, just for visibility.
I'm just trying to understand, if you do the signage for the store, if you're taking two of those little black panels horizontally across the entire sign, I guess, is that like part, like two separate TV? And one of them is just have the name of the store versus the bottom piece portion? It just continues to change?
Yes, yes, sort of, yes, yes. So each, each block that you see up there is its own individual module, and there's a controller behind each one. There's YouTube videos you can, out there that are visible, where they can actually pull the piece out, or they'll, you'll see a display. There's no, it's missing one box or one, one block, basically, in there. They can just take a brand new one, plug it in, and it lights up, and it looks just like it's always been there. So that's how this newer technology is designed, whereas the old ones, once these modules started going bad, the whole sign goes bad. And that's why we're here today, is the old sign just could not be repaired or maintained, so.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioners have questions for the applicants?
None.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to open commission discussions. Anyone who have questions for staff, or? No? I have a question for Joanne, regarding the signage, in terms of what staff requests for. Would that be a Miriam's question, or Joanne's question?
Your question regarding?
The signage? I just wanted to see if it's, if the top two panel that he mentioned is going to be for the store's name, and then the bottom four or five, it's going to be the electronic constantly changing. Is that how it's being approved? Is that staff recommendations, or?
No.
First recommendations?
The initial recommendation was to, to keep the, the sign as shown, shown on the screen as is, and then replace the other signage on the other side of the building, rather than the digital reader board. It would be a static wall, channel letter wall sign.
Can you put that, pull that up again? That, those two signs that staff is?
So it would be that sign on the, that sign on the proposed northeast elevation, to keep it as is, and then?
But the?
And that sign to be, be replaced with a wall sign, with a channel letter wall sign, to, for the business identification.
So you're saying two different signs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's, since we're opening up for commission discussions, does anyone have any questions?
I have a question. Aesthetically, if they were to go with the digital on the, on the front, and then a static, how aesthetically is it going to look, you know, to the building? I'm gearing that I think it looks better if we were to have two. So it kind of mirrors each other, it kind of does look more Feng Shui in a way. To me, it just makes more, more sense. I don't know. I would have to probably, I didn't get a chance, I got this, you know, on Friday. I'm new to this, so I'm trying to, you know, gauge everything. But I would have loved to have driven by to kind of see how, how I can envision it and see it, because I think I, I would like to know what it's going to physically look like, if I can see the building versus, you know, not.
Aesthetically would be subjective.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, so it all depends on the individual viewing it. But it, it's staff's, the reason for staff's recommendation is not, is not necessarily, it's not necessarily just because of aesthetic reasons. It's mainly because there really isn't anywhere else in the city that has two different reader board wall signs on, on any property in the city. And also, and, and also mainly because of, of the variance findings, there really isn't any, anything that, 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 that is unique to this subject property, that, that would, that would be, that, I guess, whereas they should be granted, and staff's, that where there should be granted more than one reader board wall sign, in comparison to other office buildings in, in the same general area.
They're not asking?
Where else they would not be allowed.
They're not asking for two readers?
They are.
They are.
Yes.
Miriam, can you pull up the pictures that there was one on the right and there was one on the left, the old signage? Okay, those two signage. Okay, so staff is recommending, there are three items on it. The first one would be approving the variance as requested. And then with the 78 plus the one that's, keep it the 54 square footage on the size?
Chair, if I may? So those are the planning commission's options. So the planning commission, one of, one of the options that were given to the planning commission is to approve the variance application as presented in the resolution, which is for that same size digital reader board sign above the portico. And replacing the other proposed reader board sign with a channel letter wall sign. The planning commission can, can approve that as is. The planning commission also has an option of adopting the approval resolution with changes, and those changes can be removing some of the conditions of approval that are included in the presented resolution, or adding on to those conditions of approval. If the planning commission wants to approve, or wishes to approve both, both digital reader board signs, then, then you can delete and modify that resolution to approve both digital reader board signs. And if the planning commission would like to approve those digital reader board signs, only if they have a static signage of the business identification or business name on top, then the planning commission can also do that as well. Or, or add on additional conditions of approval to the existing resolution. And the other option would be to deny the variance.
Is the applicant asking for their name to be on top?
They, they offered during the public hearing.
Traditionally, in a, in a building or office building, we do have one signage that is approved. It's not electronic, like this one right here. So that if you, like they were saying earlier, that if you were to drive around, you can kind of look at the building. The famous one that I noticed is way up there and tall, was the Wells Fargo building, but now it's something else. So traditionally, in an office building, in the past, when we approved it, it's just one name for the office, or one signage, like if we have a retail or a, a, what is it, Raising Cane, it would be just the name of the stores, or the retail, the office on a building, one. But this particular is unique in the sense that it, it is facing the freeway. The light would be reflecting toward the freeway, which is all lit up anyway, at nighttime. So I am leaning toward, toward, I'm okay with the signage. I'm not sure about commissioners would agree, but I do like to see the name of the store or office on that particular signage, so that if anyone come by, they can see that that is the building and that is the store or office name on it. So that this way, it's not all electronic and it's constantly changing, like, you know, moving YouTube or TV on that particular sign. So, and, and to be, to have it look so much similar, both of them should look alike, some, I mean, they're about the same size to begin with, but a different section. And it is different sections, but I'm not sure if you can, I guess, when you're driving along the freeway, going and coming, you can see two different, different signs. I mean, one of each, right? You're going east and you're going west, you're at least?
You can see them both at the same time.
I mean, not both, but at least one of them. Going east, you can see one, and going west, you can see the other one. So for that reason, I guess I'm, I like two motions to approve with, Joanne, do we need to add the conditions in terms of the signage of the, is that item number two? Or do we need to add the conditions?
You would, Chair, if I may, you would, you would motion to approve the, the variance with modifications to the resolution? And, and then, since it is a variance, I, I would ask that the, the motion be specific to, to the size of the electronic reader board portion, and also the size of the, the static portion.
Basically, they're the same size, right?
The two reader boards are the same size.
So, I'm sorry, is your motion for, for, for one wall sign and for one reader board sign, or two, two different reader, two different reader board signs as proposed, but with, with the static signage on top?
Motion for two, two of the signage that was, was drawn here?
Electronic.
Electronic, yeah. And then with the name on the, the store or the office name on top. Okay. And it's, and to make sure, I guess I like to add, to make sure is that, you know, the signage, which they did clarify, that it's not going to extend over the little wall, or? Yeah.
I have a quick?
Go ahead.
Question, just for clarification on your motion. With regard to the static portion of the, of the signage, are you, how, how large are you proposing that?
He mentioned two of these little, I mean?
Can you pull, Miriam, can you pull up the electronic? There you go. You can't really see it there, but on the, here, you can see it more on the plan, the two little block on top, so the total of one.
How, how big are two of those blocks, or each one of the blocks?
About 18 inches combined.
Right.
Yeah. 18 inches and 11, about 11 feet. That's a few inches long.
I have a thought, and it's sort of a friendly?
Go ahead.
Amendment, perhaps, to your motion, is if you want to do two blocks, what I would say is no less than two of those eight, two of those 18-inch blocks. And that way, to the extent that they want to make it, the static portion larger, that's, that's not going to be a problem. And the other, real quick question I did have is, as far as static, are you talking about static on the electronic reader board, or static as, as if it's a completely separate portion of the signage? I've seen it both ways.
To make it look nice, I think, just stay with the electronics, so it's kind of like one big sign? You know, we should be able to, I don't know what the end result looked like, but?
Would the company name be on another wall, or?
No, the company would be on that block. Yes.
On the top, okay.
Correct, the 18 inches and then 11 feet long.
Only, only question on that is?
Because if it's not, it's going to look like this, what they're having right now.
Well, similar. I don't know that it needs to have the, the outside bands. It's not, the, the technology has advanced, so it's?
Right, right.
It's pretty seamless, but the only, the only concern I have at all, and I don't necessarily know what the consensus is here, but with regard to any type of electronic reader board, in the event you have a power outage or something like that, we're not going to be able to see what the identity of the building is. That would be my only concern, and this would be an, an exception to what I think we see throughout the city. I mean, if you look at Porto's signage, if you look at West Covina Medical Center, and on and on and on down the freeway, everybody has a static portion of the sign that is not part of the electronic reader board. So I think for consistency's sake, it probably makes sense to, to have it not be part of the electronic reader board, much as I, much as I like the electronic look. I mean, if you go to any arena or whatever, there, it's all electronic reader board and it looks?
Lights are out, everybody's lights are out.
Right, exactly. But, you know, in the event that you have a, an emergency situation or something like that, you'll be able to identify, you'll be able to identify what the building is. That's the only thing I would say.
I will motion to second.
We're open. It says, just like that. Instead of saying wind supply, in Allied Restoration, they cover the other physical pieces that we have, and just make them non-existent, so they will not be powered. So it would be 18 inches sign across metal, and it would be active.
Well, that's what, that's what I assumed they were going to do.
It probably look more modern look, if it's all electronic, with just the name static on the front, so it looks more, not like this. I guess we can leave that up to the owner, if they want to cover it with a metal piece, or just leave it electronic. I think it might look more, you know, bring it up to date, just with the new signage, and having the two 18 inches, the two block that they mentioned, just going across with the, with the office name on it.
I agree.
Just clean, no frame, it seems like frameless.
I know maintenance-wise, if you go with a metal at the top, eventually, the sun's going to eat away at the color, it's going to diminish, it's going to look uglier over time. I'm thinking the electronic board will probably at least hold up a lot longer.
Still get burned in, unfortunately. So that's, that's the only concern I have, and then, along as?
Chair, if I may? So the code allows, the, this type of signage is for the building identification sign. So for, for a building identification sign, it should have a static, non-electronic reader board type signage go, to go along with it. Otherwise, it's not something that would be allowed by code. Otherwise, it's not something that would be allowed by code.
Interesting. Could that go somewhere else? Can't, right, on the building? What do you think?
Want to see it? Yeah, I'll put you on that.
If our commissioners, we can't see it, is it possible can be, you know, ask the applicants to come back so that they can possibly put the static on top of those two electronic, the name of your office name versus on the side, I guess the two little pointy area, I'm not sure if it's flat. One of you maybe put the name on there as well, so give us some options.
I have a thought, maybe instead of, instead of holding it up, we could make that be one of the conditions, that they come back and they provide us with an acceptable static sign and that the variance is only conditionally in effect until such time as we approve the static signage.
Chair FMA.
The condition is, the variance wouldn't be.
Yeah, the variance would change. So if that would be the case, then we would have to renotice the item. Because this variance application is specifically noticed for this particular application signage.
So the static signage, if it's added on, would be outside the scope and we'd have to renotice it?
Correct.
Okay.
Even if we made it as a, as a condition subsequent to maintain the variance at a subsequent meeting?
We can motion to bring it back. So the next meeting, we can bring it back, so we notice it, so that we can see the sign properly. So at least they can have those two electric sign and possibly the static sign right next to those two little pointy on the side of the wall, one side of the wall.
But notices will have to go out again?
We, as commissioners, we can't make those decision. The applicant needs to make those decisions, so we probably have to renotice and bring it back.
I would open the public hearing and ask the applicant.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing and Chris, oh, Chris or?
Kelly.
Chris Kelly or OP? Hi.
Okay, yeah, so, and of course, we want to try and accomplish everything here tonight, if possible, but if we can't, I understand. But it's, just to make the case for the static panel, it would look quite similar to what's up there now. Of course, they have a blue frame around it, this is all black, everything's much more monochromatic, blends better with the building. But it would be very, very, what we would present would be very similar to that. We would just take out the top two blocks and put in, it's identical to what's up there now, basically. That's, that would be a metal panel above the readable message center portion of the sign. So it would just say Allied Restoration, black background with their graphics over front, over top, so. And it's for them to, it behooves them to maintain it through the years. They maintain that building beautifully, I mean, it's impeccable condition, so. They bake graffiti immediately when it happens. So if something happens with the sign, that being their main source of identification, it's in their best interest to make sure they maintain it and keep it in pristine condition. Burn-in, as you mentioned, is a concern. If we go with a, all LED up there, use the existing blocks, it would burn in over time and the view would degrade over time, which is why I think the metal panel with the graphics overlaid on top of that would be the better solution.
Chair FMA, I also have a clarification question for the applicant.
Go ahead.
You mentioned that each of the block is 18 inches. However, when they calculated 18, one and a half times, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine blocks, it's over the seven feet in height that is shown on the plan. So I'm not sure if it is 18 inches.
Yeah, the 18 was, we were trying to guess because the manufacturer did not supply us with the size of each block. So, which is why earlier I had mentioned just taking two block sections minimally. I mean, if it needs to be bigger, more, you know, so we have more static to accommodate their logo and their name, we'd certainly like to have the option to use either two or three of those blocking sections across.
So if we said no less than 36 inches?
I would just say if we could do it by blocks or 18 inches.
I think earlier I understood as two of those block equals about 18 inches.
Approximately, we don't have the.
Not two, not one, okay.
Yeah, 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 yes, I'm sorry, yes, two.
Okay, got it.
It might be 17 inches. I don't, from the manufacturer, I don't have the exact dimensions of the height of each block section. So that's why I was mentioning just to cover two blocks. But if we could certainly have the option to go up to three for the static, just in case, so that it fits comfortably on the sign. We don't want to have to shrink or make it look odd in any way.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think there'd be an objection, I mean, speaking for myself, I don't think there'd be an objection to doing a larger static portion, I think the question is on the reader board, more than anything else, so.
Right.
So let me ask you this, if we were to go with the metal covering the two blocks with the name on top, so the screen at the end of the day would look somewhat like this size?
Correct.
So how many inches are the ones, I'm sorry, excuse me, how many inches are what's currently there or was there?
Was there, I'm not sure, I know it was.
Size of the business name.
Yeah, I'm not sure on that, that was done so long ago. I remember seeing it on the freeway, every time I drove by, but I wasn't involved in it, so I don't know, I apologize.
Does staff have an idea on how big the signage is, so it's easily legible from the freeway? Vantage point for a static sign?
I'm sorry, for the static sign on top of the digital reader board?
Yeah.
The.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, do you have a recommended size that you would want to see?
It would be 16 and a half square feet at the minimum, what he had mentioned to the two blocks.
Okay, all right.
So the purpose of this sign is supposedly from the freeway, when you're driving, you're looking at 11 feet, that's two of my heights, would be a little more, would be 11 feet. So if you're driving at, you know, 70 miles, so that sign goes by really fast. So I'm trying to see if we can potentially keep the electronic, you know, the whole seven by 11 feet, then you can have a little signage store next to it and the side, I'm not sure, so. The sign's primary use isn't for advertising, correct, because it's for community?
It's for community and.
So what Allied Restoration does is specialty service, so it's not like people are going to walk by and, oh, let me go get one of those.
Or something, no, no, and actually, that would open up Pandora's Box, because Caltrans ODA would then become involved. It would become a billboard, so that's, no, we don't want to go down that path. Yeah, it's for, they exempt anything for onsite advertising and/or community events. And that's strictly what this is used for, or would be used for.
The electronic sign looks really nice, just the way it is. It's just that we needed a sign of the name of the stores or the office. Adding on the top or the bottom just takes away from the electronic sign, so.
It doesn't, it doesn't, because the panel is basically a cap that would go over the frame that's, you know, that would already be put in place. And then we would just disable the blocks behind it, so that we're not wasting electricity and there's no need to have that light on behind there. So yes, it's clean when it's, the way it's proposed, and if we had just the static. But burn-in is a little bit of a concern, so those blocks would have to be replaced. I'm not sure what the lifespan is on them now, but the last one I saw do that, it was about two and a half to three years. But those blocks can be quite expensive, so the idea is not to try to burn them in. That's why the messages, even at, any of the message centers you see around, they do change. They don't, you know, they're not like TVs where they're not, you know, like Las Vegas or Times Square, but they do change enough that it prevents the burn-in, so that'd be our only concern. But if that's what the board wants, of course, we can go that route.
Do we want a motion? Anyone want a motions to approve it as is with the metal on top for the signage? Okay. So we're going to be motioning to approve with the signage with the metal signage on the top? Commissioner Basara?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I think I'm going to second, I just want to make sure, are we, we're talking about no less than, what, 16 square feet as?
16 and a half.
Or 16 and a half square feet as Joanne was describing? Okay, then I'll second.
Wait, 16 and a half square foot or 18 inches height and then 11 feet long for the signage of the name of the store? Joanne?
Correct, two blocks.
Two little blocks.
Two blocks high minimum, and then across the entire, the entire proposed reader board as a static.
So it's about.
Identification sign.
I believe it's about 18 inches and then 11 feet long, that top portion for both of them. Okay, so if we have a motion, so we have a motion and a second.
I also motion to approve.
We only need two, then she's gonna, she's gonna, she's gonna do roll call.
Just a.
In a little bit, you're gonna.
I'll restate the motion.
And I just have one other quick question, do you need, do you need specific findings from us or no?
Yes. So I'll go ahead and restate the motion. The motion was to approve the variance with a static sign on top of the digital reader board, electronic digital reader board portion. And the static sign would be no, no smaller than 16 and a half square feet. And the digital reader board portion would be no larger than 61.66 square feet for both signage.
Approximately 16 square foot, that's what you're talking about, like the 18 inches?
Yes, it all calculates up to 16 and a half square feet.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with a second from Commissioner Lewis. When Joanne's done, we'll just do the vote.
Commissioner Basara, with your motion, are you including the findings that were in the staff report?
Yes, you're not talking about the option two or the variance, or you're just talking how the.
Findings that are necessary to approve the variance?
Yes.
Joanne, would you ready, we just do the resolution number and roll call, for vote?
Okay, the resolution number is 25-6167. And I'll go ahead and do roll call. Commissioner Reyes?
I motion to approve.
Aye, yes. Okay, Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Basara?
Aye.
Vice, Chair Hing?
Aye.
Okay, the item is approved. 4-0.
This action is final and let's appeal to the City Council within 10 days. Thank you. We will now move to non-hearing items. Tonight, we have, one, reorganizing the Planning Commission.
I think we can just do the reorg, you want to just do it?
Did we do it already?
Not yet.
Yeah, we have a co-chair, is that, Liv going to be the chair or how does that?
Is there a nomination?
I was just going to say, I'll nominate Commissioner Basara to be the new Chair of the Planning Commission.
Okay. I know, it's so fast, huh? I'll second that.
Roll call, Commissioner Reyes?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Chair Basara?
Aye.
Chair Hing?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Commissioner Basara is now Chair. Is there a nomination for Vice Chair?
Oh, I guess I'll nominate Nicholas Lewis. I'll second. Okay.
Roll call, Commissioner Reyes?
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Basara?
Aye.
Commissioner Hing?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. All right.
Liv, you're in charge now.
I know. You're in charge.
Are we done?
Yep. No, we're swapping.
Two more things.
No, we're swapping.
Just finish the night, yeah.
We'll finish the night, okay. We can't finish the night unless we swap.
Well, she can still do it, right?
All righty, all righty, okay. We're done for the night.
No, Commissioners' report. Commission report.
Okay, Commissioner reports and City Council action?
City Council action, the, the City Council had called up the West Covina Medical Center that the Planning Commission had approved. And at the City Council meeting, the City Council had voted to overturn the Planning Commission's approval of the West Covina Medical Center's behavioral health facility or psychiatric facility. So that project has been denied by the City Council. The applicant would, can potentially resubmit with the modification on what they had initially submitted. Until then, the project is no longer in the queue.
Thank you. Have any more actions to report from City Council?
No other City Council actions pertaining to the Planning Commission. That was not, that has not already been reported. As far as Community Director's report is concerned, there is, the summer concert. As far as community director's report is concerned, there is the summer concert series that will be starting on June 18th at 6:00 PM. It's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at the Civic Center courtyard. The city will be celebrating Memorial Day on May 26th. There will be a Memorial Day celebration. And we, the planning division, along with city council and city manager's office, is working on adding on names to the Veterans Memorial, which was funded by the Arts and Public Places program. And we are looking into, we had hired a contractor to sketch the marble, etch the marble prior to Memorial Day, so.
Coming up very fast. Okay, having no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:15. Thank you, everyone. Good night.